Call this meeting to order the mayor and board of commissioners for March 26, 2019. Can I get the roll call, please?
Let the record show that all elected officials present, with the exception of Algie Pearson, you do have form.
Thank you. Will you rise with me for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow your heads with me for a brief prayer? Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of the town of Rising Sun, on behalf of our elected officials. God, I ask that you guide us in our ways, God, and continue to send us on the right track. I ask that you watch over our families, of the families of our police officers, our fire department, our EMS lord, as well as with our military serving overseas. Please be with us as we're here tonight and as we leave here this evening. In Jesus' name, amen. All right. First, we have no executive session reports. We do have a public presentation tonight. First on the list, Commissioner Othmanreth, if you want to do the introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want, I have the pleasure tonight of introducing the director of Cecil County Public Libraries, Morgan Miller. Morgan is a resource we have here in town that we have somewhat overlooked in the years. Morgan, I know you put in a lot of time, a lot of hours at all the political events. You worked very hard to secure funding for the public libraries. And it's great to see in this electronic age where everybody's working off iPads that the libraries are doing so well. And I think a lot of what's happening in Cecil County, you and your staff have made happen. So, before I forget, consider this an open invitation. Anytime you want to come to our meeting and talk about what's going on, not just in Rising Sun, but throughout Cecil County, through all the different public libraries. And we thank you very much for coming tonight, and we're looking forward to what you have to share with us. So, like I said, and I thank your staff for coming. We didn't expect you to bring a whole group, but thank you very much for coming tonight.
My brains travel in packs.
I see.
Well, I'm honored, I'm honored by your words. Thank you. We really are happy to be here. Alan, as we've interacted, has always said, you know, I think we need to have people come and tell us more about what's going on at our public library system these days. They just don't know. And so, because we're neighbors, as I'm neighbors with some of you, he could never hear me stop talking about it. So, it's really good to be here. I'm happy to be a resource, and I think your best resources are sitting here with me as well. So, I've brought some staff from the Rising Sun Branch Library. If you knock on my door here in Rising Sun, because I am a resident, I'll answer your question, but better you knock on theirs at the Rising Sun Branch in town. So, I'll introduce them first before we get into our presentation. Jennifer Carter is our branch manager. Elizabeth Mayer is our teen librarian. Laura Metzler is our small business librarian. She travels throughout the county working with aspiring business owners and entrepreneurs. And Rachel Wright is our public services manager. So, she oversees all of our branches and works with our bookmobile and our outreach programs. So, I have deep roots in Rising Sun. In addition to being a resident here, I'm a proud graduate of Rising Sun Middle and High School. So, it's very nice to be in this room. Of all that time, I don't think I've set foot in here. So, talking a little bit about the system level at first, we have seven branches in the county, a bookmobile that travels just about every single road, a website that gives citizens access to digital books, as well as online learning platforms, courses, research databases, and through that, we connect more than 64,000 active library users in the county. That's more than half the population. When I say active library user, that's somebody who has used their library card over the past year. So, these numbers are pretty fresh. This includes about 3,300 new users that we welcomed just last year. In terms of, before we get into what's going on in Rising Sun, you know, modern libraries, I think some of the surprise sometimes, the good surprise that Alan has when I'm telling him about things, is that modern libraries, they're really about learning, and learning in all formats. So much of what we need to learn, not only as, you know, children and teens, but especially as adults, that learning happens outside of a traditional classroom. You have to learn it at much greater breadth and depth, and you have to learn it at a much faster rate. And so, the public library system is so perfectly poised to help any individual, no matter what their goal, connect them with a wealth of resources, be it books, a librarian, a class, a piece of technology, create that on-demand learning experience that they really need to achieve in much faster time these days. I tend to tell people anymore, think of the word "library" as a verb and not as a noun, because it's a very dynamic learning space that can and should readily shift to meet the needs of the community it's serving. And so, that's a lot of the fun we have in our work. Our mission is to champion reading, first and foremost, build knowledge, and inspire curiosity, which is really important to us. Whether you walk in our doors, check out a book, use one of our 3D printers, go to a class, hop on the bookmobile, we want you to experience that mission in every way. And I think the fact that 64,000 people in this community have experienced that mission and done at least one of those things over the past year says something really great about what's going on in Cecil County. It describes a community that I think is very optimistic about its future and aspirational about the future that it wants to create. So, on to Rising Sun. Rising Sun may be the smartest town in the county, and you can, it's not because Alan and I live here.
She says this about all the towns she visits.
Nope. That's not true at all, and some are gonna, some are not gonna be happy about this. I have the data to back it up. This is nothing new, but over the course of many, many years now, Rising Sun citizens check out the most books per capita. We circulate about 100,000 books at the Rising Sun Library every year. When you add in other materials and formats like CD books, some of our learning kits, STEM resource kits, and the early literacy bags, DVDs, that number is about 150,000. So, per citizen, Rising Sun citizens check out 28 items per citizen every year. That's really extraordinary, and I think is something to be very proud of in this community. So, like I said, I don't just go around saying this. I have the data to back it up. Since July, this branch has already welcomed 262 new library cardholders, and they see about 5,500 visits per month. I think the only, only business or organization that sees more might be Rise and Grind, based on my experience. That's wonderful. That's wonderful, though. So, I'm, some of our staff are gonna talk about what's going on inside our four walls, but I really would challenge and encourage you to look outside those four walls, because I think you're gonna start seeing the Rising Sun Branch Library and Cecil County Public Libraries everywhere you turn. They do a lot of outreach and work with our schools here in Rising Sun. The bookmobile makes regular stops at our Maple Heights neighborhood. They have an outreach program with Way of Life's daycare program. You will even see them, if you're in Martins, if you look in that children's corner that's Dr. Seuss-themed, you will see a strong library presence there. And I mentioned Rise and Grind. We are in the planning stages of developing a really exciting partnership program with them that we're hoping to launch soon. So, it's not surprising, this library and books in general have been loved for decades. Just to give you a little bit of history about the Rising Sun Library, it was started by a concerned and educated and aspirational group of citizens. I'm not sure of the exact date. It was probably in the 1930s, but it could be before then. It was started in the basement of James United Methodist Church. In 1947, across the state of Maryland, libraries everywhere were starting to formally organize under Maryland State Education Law. And so, in 1947, Rising Sun became a part of the Cecil County Public Library system. It was started by a group called the Friends of the Rising Sun Branch Library, and that group is still in existence and going very strong today. You're all welcome to join and be a part of it. They've helped us to do some, some pretty extraordinary things. A few years ago, we renovated the existing branch, and if you haven't, Pauline, I know you, you come in and use it, and Dave, I've seen you there. I'll look for you there, Mary. If you haven't been in recently, it's just really vibrant. We were able to really expand our spaces for teens. We took what was an underutilized quiet room, and this is one of my favorite things to do, turned it into the noisiest space in the branch. It's a wonderful children's room for children who are birthed up into elementary school and their families. There's an early literacy center and activities in there. I go there about every other weekend with my kids and spend a few hours, and it's just wonderful to see so many community members in Rising Sun doing so many different things under one roof. It really gives you great hope for humanity. So, I will now turn it over to Laura Metzler. Laura is our business librarian. She spoke, I think, just last week, maybe the week before, with the Rising Sun Chamber of Commerce and had a good discussion with them. But I wanted to come and ask her to share some of the things that you might not be aware of, that our libraries are doing these days in the town of Rising Sun. So, I have some bags for you as well that have a lot of handouts about the things that we're gonna be talking about tonight.
Thanks. Sorry. It's okay. Hi, I'm Laura Metzler. I'm the business librarian here at the Cecil County Public Library. And as Morgan said, I had the pleasure of talking to the Rising Sun Chamber of Commerce, which I believe you were there, so you may have heard some of this too. But I got to meet some of the local business owners and had a really nice time, and shared with them what I'm gonna share with you tonight, which is basically how the library is, helps entrepreneurs, people that are thinking of starting a business, and existing business owners grow their business and open businesses, that sort of thing. It's not always intuitive to think of libraries and businesses going together. Sorry, I'm not used to flash photography. No, it's okay. But in your, the handouts that you got, there's a brochure, a handout that looks like this. And this is kind of my on-the-go PowerPoint, if you will. It kind of walks you through, you don't have to pull it out now, I can go through it, but it walks you through what the library is capable of doing with these entrepreneurs. I don't know if any of you have ever thought about starting a business, but a lot of people that I meet with have an idea, right? They have a, an idea for a great service they want to provide. They have an idea for a great product, but they're not really sure how to make that idea a reality, right? So, they might Google it. How do you start a business? Of course, you're gonna get thousands of responses to that, right? And it's really overwhelming. So, my job is to help them go through that, right? Figure out, how do you start this kind of business? Do you need a business license? Does it make sense to be an LLC or a sole proprietorship? What are the differences? You know, how do I get a business license if I need one? How do I get a home improvement license if I need one? You know, what is my target market? You know, how do I figure that out? And then, once I figured it out, are they here? Does it make sense to open this business here? You know, these are the kinds of questions they can ask, and with the resources at the library, I can show them, you know, depending on their computer literacy, I can either help them with this or show them just how to access it. But we have databases that give demographic information, projections. For example, I helped a woman who's actually a Rising Sun resident who has a home-based business. She has a bakery, and right now, she's been selling to farmers markets, and she just bought a food truck, so she's looking to kind of expand her offerings. And with our database, you can see how many people in a given geography, you can do a radius to an address, a zip code, a county, a town, are consuming cookies, say, per household, how much they're spending now, and then what they're projected to spend five years from now. It gets that specific, just to give you an example. But you can find out, you know, if you're targeting a specific age, you know, what's that demographic gonna look like five years from now, right? Does it make sense to open this business here and now? That sort of thing. So, along with that, we have databases that can help with competitive research. You know, a lot of people come in saying, well, either one, I don't have any competitors, or, you know, how do I find my competitors? So, we have a database. Again, you plug in geography, you plug in an industry, and it literally pulls up every competitor you could have, and it shows you their sales volume, how many employees they have, how long they've been around. It gives you tons of information, all of that from public records. So, it's, and you can do that in 30 seconds. So, it's kind of making it not so overwhelming for them, right? And helping them decide if this makes sense for them. So, we have a lot of tools that, you know, you can't get on Google and require either a visit to the library or using our website. And then also, along with that is, you know, a lot of people need money to start a business, and so, they're seeking a loan somehow, and that requires a business plan, right? And the idea of writing a business plan is really daunting for a lot of people. You know, they're staring at a blank Word document, and they know they have to write this detailed plan, and it's just overwhelming. So, we have a lot of resources that can help simplify that process for them and make it less overwhelming. So, you know, and that can be a process where they write their first draft, they email it to me, I offer suggestions, and it kind of goes back and forth with the idea that at the end, they would have a more polished plan to present to a lender. So, you know, just really try to help in any way we can to simplify it and not make it so overwhelming. Also, as a librarian, my job is to provide information, and a lot of times, they're seeking advice from accountants, or they need advice from insurance agents, that sort of thing. So, I try to have a program once a month that will give them that information. So, just yesterday, we had a program, and actually, all of our programs are listed in this flyer that you guys have, and it was on computer security for small business. So, we had a number of small businesses attend and basically kind of scared them, but in a good way, to, to make their businesses more secure online, and made me want to do a lot of stuff to make myself more secure, too. But that, that sort of thing is, is what we try to do with our programming. We have questions around taxes, and we have an accountant come in to answer tax questions. So, we just try to kind of, I try to find presenters that can give them that advice that they need, especially when they're just starting out and they don't have a lot of cash flow to go out and get that help. So, we have an entrepreneurs' book club that meets once a month, and that's a group of entrepreneurs that kind of network and discuss the challenges of being an entrepreneur and around a book, which is really exciting. And so, you know, it's just, it kind of runs the gamut in how I can help someone, but we've helped a lot of Rising Sun businesses and businesses throughout the county. And again, it's just the idea that it can be really overwhelming, and, you know, we just kind of want to help simplify that process for them. We also have a really exciting program for teens. We have a teen small business competition every summer, and it's a Shark Tank-style event where the teens, through a series of sessions, learn how to write a business plan, and then, when they have Shark Tank music playing in our showcase, and they walk in on a red carpet, and they have to present, they're usually scared to death, and they pitch their idea to a panel of judges to win money, and it's really exciting, and the ideas are actually really amazing, as I'm sure all of my coworkers can attest to that have been there. And it's really exciting, and they try, they do such a great job. And so, we are looking for mentors. Every year, we ask people in the community to help these teens out, so if you're interested, let me know, because I'd love to have you there. And so, that's kind of a good intro into our teen programming. Yeah, you wanna, okay, here's Elizabeth.
Good evening. Hello. So, my name's Elizabeth Mayer, and I am the adult library associate at the Rising Sun Branch, right up the street. So, at the Rising Sun Library, we offer an array of programs and services that are tailored to the teens in their community, that create new opportunities for all teens to promote personal growth, academic success, and career development. So, those programs include Teen Nights and Afternoon Academy, which is a program designed for students who aren't in the traditional school setting, and the Teen Advisory Group as well. So, the Teen Advisory Group, also known as TAG, is a program that I implemented this school year for high school, high school students or students who are in grades nine through 12. So, before implementing this program within the Rising Sun Branch Library, I observed the Teen Advisory Committee that is actually hosted at the Rising Sun High School. So, I surveyed the students there within that committee, and I was trying to get a better understanding if these students would be interested in participating in a program like this at the public library. And the findings were conclusive. They were extremely interested, and they were desperate to find volunteer opportunities as well. So, I created this program, TAG, to give teens the opportunity to brainstorm ideas together, to make suggestions of what kind of programs they'd really like to see in the library, and allow them to connect with the community and to connect with their peers and really show what they want in the community as well. So, teens are in charge of planning, budgeting, marketing, and executing the programs that they suggest. So, a really great example of a program that they recently did was our Teen Night, which we had on March 8th, and we saw a total of 40 teens attend this program between the ages of 11 and 17. So, that's fantastic. So, the Teen Advisory Group or the TAG members, they actually created all of the programs within that Teen Night, and they actually helped facilitate it as well. So, they were running the stations, they were taking pictures, they were offering help to other teens. So, ultimately, the Teen Advisory Group gives young people a voice in creating and sustaining services for their own age group. And TAG also supports building meaningful relationship with their peers in the library, and hopefully, they'll become library, long, oh my goodness, lifelong library users. That's a tongue twister. So, to better service the teens in the community, I also collaborate with the school systems, and I promote resources within the libraries, or I promote our library resources within the school systems, so that the youth have a better understanding of what resources are really available to them and what they can utilize. So, I go into, I go into the high school and the middle school, and I attend their open houses, their back-to-school nights. I've been a judge at their science fairs as well, so I see a lot of these students a lot. Another really great example of how we collaborate with the school system is through a service called Spark. So, Spark stands for Students Progress and Achieve with Reading Kits. So, now, the key ideas behind the Spark program were developed by applying research findings from the study by Dominican University, which concluded that students who participate in summer reading programs scored higher on reading achievement tests at the beginning of the next school year than those who did not participate in those programs. So, in response to that study, Spark was developed to give those students a leg up and to deter that summer slide that we often see. So, in preparation for this program, I visit the middle school, and I survey these sixth graders to get a better understanding of what kind of material is they'd like to see on the bookmobile. So, whether or not it be graphic novels, nonfiction, their favorite series. So, all of this information is taken into account when selecting books for this program. So, on the day of the Spark visit, the sixth graders board the bookmobile, and they make their selections, and it's a really great program, and they're so excited. You know, they get to pick out five high-interest books to keep and take home with them. They don't have to return them, they are theirs to keep. And they're also given a drawstring bag with all of the materials needed for summer reading as well. And it's just really, a really great experience to see their face light up when they get to select these five books, and then, once they pick their books, they have the rest of the class period to kind of sit on the lawn outside and flip through those materials and, you know, discuss their new books with their friends as well. So, it's a really great opportunity for these kids, and it's a great way also to kick off summer reading. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you.
Hello again. My name is Jennifer Carter. I'm the branch manager at the Rising Sun Library, and I'm just gonna talk a little bit about the branch as a whole and some of the services that we offer for adults. So, the town of Rising Sun and the Rising Sun Library have a wonderful partnership, and the library really does play an integral part in the community here. We see hundreds of people every day come through our doors, and it's a pleasure to work with them for all of their different informational needs. One of the things that we're most proud of are all the learning opportunities that we're able to provide the citizens of Rising Sun, and with that, I'd like to briefly talk about some of the programs that we offer for adults. Last month, the library hosted the Lincoln University Choir. It was an outrageously wonderful event. The choir came on their, their tour bus, they brought instruments, they provided and sang a bunch of really historical, deeply rooted African-American songs accompanied by instruments, as well as explanations of the history of the songs. We were hearing about this event from people that attended days afterwards, just talking about what a wonderful experience it was. It was a real thrill for everybody that was able to come. We had almost 50 people in the building that night for that event, so it was a really wonderful experience for everybody that was able to come. Yesterday, we hosted what's gonna be a two-part series with Beverly Jackie, who is a registered dietitian-nutritionist from the University of Maryland Extension, and she's offering a program called Live Smart, is it Eat Smart, Live Strong? It's healthy eating for people over 60. So, we really wanted to provide some nutrition benefits for some of our, our citizens that fall into that age group. We had almost, we had a little, I think we had 11 people able to come to that event. She was really wonderful. She provided nutritional assistance, she talked about exercise, she brought recipes and a few things to sample there, and she'll be back next week for the second part of that series. Coming up on April 4th, we'll be hosting a program on the Civilian Conservation Corps. And one of the new things for the Rising Sun Library that we just started was we got a 3D printer, which has just been a big thrill for a lot of the citizens that come into the branch. We've been able to demonstrate how the 3D printer works, and now, the Cecil County Public Library offers the option for people to upload, library cardholders to upload designs. There's a couple different resources available online. One's called Thinkercad. There's a program called Blender, and another online resource called Thingaverse, where you can actually design, upload designs, and then submit them to the library for review, and then we do print them, and then you can come and buy them, and they're just, I think they're very, you can purchase them for very inexpensively, it's 25 cent a gram. So, people are printing and very interested in what we're printing at the library as well, which has just been a thrill for just about everybody that walks through the door. They love to see the things that we're printing, as well as what else is available there. So, just wanted to kind of give you a, a quick synopsis of a few things that are going on for adults, and I guess I'll turn it back over to Morgan to make some closing remarks.
One group of users in this community that we haven't talked about much is children. And I think, you know, it's a good opportunity for us to perhaps come back and talk with you about them more. I think people often associate libraries with children and with storytimes, and that's absolutely true. We put a large amount of our resources into early childhood education classes, support for, for, for elementary school students, because we believe, and the research proves, that that window of birth through five and before a child enters school is the biggest opportunity you have to shape who they're going to be, what kind of student they're going to be, how much school they'll attain, what kind of citizen they're gonna be. Are they going to engage in reckless behavior? So, we do hundreds of early childhood classes for different developmental stages before a child gets to school, to not only prepare them, but to also educate their parents in helping them to, to, to learn and be prepared for school when they get there. So, perhaps we can come back and talk about that a little later, maybe as we get ready for the summer reading and learning program. So, in a couple of weeks, we're gonna be celebrating National Library Week. It is a celebration across the country's 123,000 libraries of librarianship, and the work that libraries and librarians do to transform lives and strengthen their communities. There are more public libraries in this country than McDonald's, which is a good, great thing, I know. In Cecil County, I did the math today, I was sharing with the county council, so if we include our bookmobile in the count, public library branches outnumber McDonald's in Cecil County two to one, and I like those odds. So, we would invite you to come in during that week, but also, there are, as always, there are a lot of programs, classes. Would love to work with you to find a part for you to play in that, whether it's reading to a child, introducing a speaker, perhaps leading a, a topic yourself. I have to say, Chief Peterson, Sheriff Adams is always coming in and doing fishing programs with me.
Oh, that's a call-out right there.
So, perhaps we can, perhaps we can discover one of your hidden talents. So, we would love to work with you more in this room, in this community, and in our libraries. And, and in closing, I'll say, the best way to, to support your public library is to use your public library. I know that many of you are already cardholders. I'm still gonna give you a card. It's my favorite thing to give out, and I'll challenge you that if you already have a Cecil County Public Library card, share this with someone else. They can bring it into any of our seven branches and register it there.
Jane, do you have a card? Do you have a card?
You bet she does.
Brenda, Brenda, do you have a card?
So...
Ah! She's a power user.
Calvin.
I'm jealous. I'm jealous. This, this library business really interferes with my reading. That's fantastic.
Sometimes she even pulls the book out and reads it while I'm speaking. Morgan, I have some late fees, I was wondering if you, no, I'm just kidding. What I wanted to tell you, is that what I need to do?
You get it to the bookmobile, they raise on your fees.
Chief knows, we do not charge.
Apparently, the chief does know.
He's gaming the system. We do not, actually, we don't, we charge fewer and fewer, fewer library fees. That brings up a good question. So, we don't charge any fees, we don't require a card on using, when you use the bookmobile. The bookmobile goes all over the county, from after-school programs, it goes to communities where there is low income, and so, to boys and girls clubs. And so, you know, we found years ago that requiring a card, charging fees, was really a barrier to people using the library and gaining access to reading, which obviously is our real mission. So, so anymore, you'll, you'll see this happening throughout the country, you know, librarians kind of coming to the realization that, yes, while we want to maintain great collections for people, you know, all the fees sort of undermine our ultimate goal of getting people to read, connect with their library, and creating that equity of access. So, right now, we have a partnership with the school system where every public school student and every teacher gets a virtual library card. It not only gives them access to just hundreds of thousands of, of, of resources through our databases, you know, SAT prep, we have a wonderful service called Lynda that allows you to go on and take you to go on and take high-quality classes in, you know, technology, design, but they also are, their materials that they check out are fine free. We send things to the school system for them, that get sent to them in their classes. So there's, there's no excuse for not taking advantage of it. And I'll work, I'll work with you on that.
So I was thinking was, the library would, and I think Commissioner Oth and Reeve had also brought this up, we have a space in our billing system to where we could include some of these Rising Sun branch events in our, in our billing system. So it goes out to all of our residents, so they know exactly what's going on. So something like this, where it shows the Rising Sun events, maybe we could get something like that and then post it, or you guys can have a separate piece of paper that you include in our bill, I think would be good.
That would be fantastic.
Especially because the library is kind of a non-for-profit, so we're able to do it for you guys.
We're a government entity. That would be fantastic, and I have thought that every time I've gotten my water bill over the past few months, is that we should connect people about that. So we will definitely take you up on that offer, thank you.
Morgan, can you, you know, you talked about after-school programs and with, you know, parents working during the day, kids in school, what, how late can they come to the library? How late is it open?
The Rising Sun branch is open until eight PM, Monday through Thursday. We close at five on Friday and Saturday. We ha- we do do, we do programs directly after school, but we have more and more programs, storytimes in the evenings, you know, STEM events for families in the evenings and on the weekends, realizing that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And for those who are asking, what is kind of the cost for coming and using the library?
Oh, that's the best thing, zero.
Say that again?
It's zero.
Okay.
You've, you've already, already paid for it. So the library's total budget, I think this is an impressive thing, which leads me to that, our, our total operating funds are just under three percent of the, of Cecil County's overall budget, and we get the majority of our funds there, but we use that to serve really more than sixty-four thousand citizens. So you, you've already paid for it. We certainly love to hear from the community and our, really, one of our values is community and responsiveness. We put it in everything we do. So we're, we're constantly asking, what can we do, what do you need, and how we align that with our services. So I'd love to continue these conversations, but getting a library card is absolutely free, as Mayor Marion alluded to. It might cost you for turning your books late, but most of the time, I'm willing, I'll get you in trouble. Most, I'd rather have you in the library anyway.
Good, good.
And when you do pay fines, it goes to a good five, good cause, helps us buy more books.
There you go. Thank you so much for coming.
Yeah, our pleasure.
All of you. It was great to have you, and I'm sure if we have any more questions, we can definitely contact you.
Sure, and we would love to come back.
Yes, consider, open invitation to you and your staff to come back to, we meet twice a month. You know, you and I talked back in early January, and we've been wanting to get you here to tell us everything that was going on. I kind of had looked to do that when everybody was shut in this winter in home during the bad weather, but here we are going into spring, you know, and there's so much going on year round at the library that I think a lot of people didn't know about. And I'm glad you came tonight and very happy that you brought all of your staff tonight. It was a great presentation, and we look forward to you coming back. Sharon, we have a large video audience, even though we don't have much here, but it's, it's great to see that the audience we do have here, along with the board, are, are users of the Rising Sun Library, and there's great, great numbers that you put out there. And the thing that I think is really cool is that the library's no longer that shh place, you know? It, it can be noisy, it can be stuffy, it can, you know, there's a lot of fun going on there that, you know, and, and it's a place where the kids can come and, and run around a little bit and, and meet other neighbors and that they didn't know they had. There's just nothing negative about it. Thank you for being at all the events you go to, we see you all the time out there, you know, working on behalf of Cecil County residents. And then the library is the way I look at it, because you're a resident of this town. I didn't know you grew up here and you had such a history here. So first and foremost, you're out here doing all this for the residents, and please, come out, see, visit any of the libraries, not just Rising Sun. And it's great to hear so many programs that are there and the cost. It's awesome. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Next on the agenda is citizens' input. Would anyone like to speak this evening? All right. Chief?
I have a report.
Perfect. Thank you.
All good.
Town administrator?
I think we turned your mic, your microphone off. I turned your microphone off when I was sitting there. Yeah. I was, I was saying, you know, you didn't have a report.
Do you try to send me a message?
Maybe.
Sorry, don't you maybe?
Okay. Under the town administrator's report, I just have a couple of updates. Mayor, the, we could do the other one under your report. The, we have received an application from Martins, and we did approve the application for, I think it's called the Click and Go, where people can order food online. Martins will go and collect.
Delivery service.
What you have ordered. And they renovated the inside of Martins to set aside a room where your orders would be stored. There's no limitations on, they, they can store hot products, they can store cold products, they can store canned goods, and there's a whole system in place that they assign you a number, and then you park in a parking space, their coordinates with that number, and then someone brings your order out to your car. So Martins is getting current with new age technology also. We have also issued a building permit for a new home in the Rising Hills development. It's the last available lot in that development. We expect them to be breaking ground once they get a consistent string of good weather. Again, I would also like to thank our Public Works crews for their hard work in fixing water main breaks and some water issues that we've been having. However, despite the fact that we have had some nuances associated with converting over to Chester Water, a lot of these breaks that we are getting are actually related to a, a, I guess I'm going to call it an equipment failure that's being seen all over the East Coast, according to our engineer, in that there are valves that were installed in the, there were common valves to be purchased and installed on the East Coast back in the mid to late nineties, early two thousands. And we have already replaced about, I believe it's five valves in town where the bolts that were used on the valve housings were not basically rated for ground contact or water, and they basically just rusted out. And the valves are actually, the bolts are blowing out at the tops of the valves, and that's what's causing the water leaks. So this apparently is an epidemic that a lot of communities on the East Coast have been experiencing. The other thing that I wanted to go over real quick, and in the future, we're going to have Judy as our office manager, will be highlighting these reports in the future, but I just wanted to take it out of the gate. We often get, there's a lot of communication that takes place up here at Town Hall with our residents. And this is an example of, we've received roughly eleven hundred inquiries in Town Hall for a variety of items, going back to the fiscal year of July first, two thousand eighteen to now. And what you have is a general breakdown of what those issues that people call about. And we have some things that, it's frustrating to us sometimes because there are, there are concerns that are expressed on social media, but they don't necessarily ever get articulated to the town of Rising Sun. And so one of the things we often hear is how bad the trash collection is. But if you look at our inquiry system here, if you go about just over halfway down, you see that we've only received seven calls from residents stating that their trash was not picked up. Now, we're not suggesting that that doesn't happen more frequently, but again, we do not monitor Facebook. We have systems in place that if you call Town Hall, we document it and there's a tracking system for that. Some of the other items is trash can replacements. We do get a lot of requests to replace trash cans, mainly driven around if you have an old brownish trash can, that is leftover from a hauler that used to provide service for the town back in the early, mid-two thousands. And so those cans are starting to wear out, and you can see where we are starting to replace those cans. We have had a lot of calls regarding water issues. Again, that was all related to the air trapped in the water as we were going through the conversion. Yes, we have had some water leaks, but I'm, I'm also going to suggest this, because the elected body just recently went through this at a recent county meeting. If anyone thinks that the water issues related that, that happened in the town of Rising Sun are only unique to the town of Rising Sun, that's just not an accurate statement. I guess to some degree, the reason why we get such a black eye over the water issues is because we like to go out on Facebook and let our residents know what is happening, whereas other communities, they're not out on Facebook, Facebook telling people they have water main breaks. And it, it happens, it drives all the municipalities in this area nuts this time during the winter. If you look at just the month of March alone, we're going to be providing you the utility bills, and you can see that we created and mailed out one thousand forty-two utility bills for a total hypothetical collection of a hundred thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy-two cents. We have processed thirty-seven building permits as of three twenty-six nineteen. And then in the month of March alone, you'll see again where we've had five trash can replacements. So we are also trying to streamline our collection processes. Over the years, the town has tried to, and we often talk about this, we try to remember that sometimes life gets in the way of our best intentions, you know, financially. And so the town has always tried to be very flexible in working with people that have utility bill issues. We've changed the way we do the billing, we've, we've tried to put more control back in the hands of the end user, and, but in the same token, we've had people take advantage of our generosity, and they let overdue payments linger around for a very, very long time, which creates hypothetical cash flow issues for us. So on the back page, you're also going to see, and we've had these questions raised in the past, if you remember a couple of years ago, Mayor Marion, when he was a commissioner, one of the first things he championed is credit card payments in town. And there were a lot of concerns that there weren't going to be a whole lot of people requesting to pay by credit card. And as you can see, that eighteen percent of our end users do use our credit card system. We get a handful of people who come in and pay by cash, and the bulk of it is through check. We are entertaining the idea of being able to do automatic bank payments, receive payments from banks, and to allow people to sign up for automatic withdrawal of their accounts like other entities do. So we are trying to provide every opportunity for people to be able to pay their bills on a timely manner, make it easy for them to pay them, pay their bills, and then also to continue to provide discounts for people that do pay their bills ahead of schedule. So you're going to be seeing this report more often in the near future, and Judy is our office manager. She has a couple of hardworking folks underneath her that have done a lot of processing upgrades, Judy especially, to try to look at our systems and find better ways to provide a service. So this is what you're going to start seeing in the future at the town meetings at least once a month. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Calvin. My mayor's report is pretty brief this evening. I did visit the Tom School. Tom School obviously is in northeast, but they asked me to come out yet again for their Mayor for a Day contest. Tom School has actually been awarded from the state as number one in winning essays. So they've had the most students that have actually won that contest. In addition, I attended Conawingo Elementary's Gifted and Talented Program. They were fourth and fifth graders. Myself and Kristi Stevens, who was our Board of Education representative, went and spoke with them. The kids had some great questions, and then Kristi and I laughed because at the end of it, they asked for a bunch of autographs, so I signed a bunch of different items for them, and they took them home. So if you're a parent and your child came home with that, I guess in the eyes of a fourth and fifth grader, mayor is a pretty cool job, so that's why they decided to do that. I do want to speak for a moment about something that happened and occurred, that's a little uncomfortable, and that is the town elected body, the majority of our elected body, myself, Commissioner Warnock, Commissioner Pearson, our town administrator, and the chief, attended a council meeting where they were getting ready to introduce their master sewer water plan, and we had an amendment. And it's no secret that we have been battling with Cecil County to include our amendment into that plan. A gentleman was allowed to speak up and launch some pretty personal attacks against, against the town. I won't lie to you, as you can read in the wig, I did confront the gentleman, mostly because if you're going to badmouth the people that work in the town and that live in the town of Rising Sun, my job is to stand up for you. So I have never met the gentleman, and he accused myself and the elected body of throwing him out of a town meeting, but all of our town meetings are taped, and we have yet to find, at least in the last two years, that he has ever attended a town meeting. And the chief would speak to the fact that I've never actually thrown someone out of a town meeting before.
He later admitted he never attended a town meeting last year.
So the gentleman doesn't live in the town of Rising Sun, he's not a resident, but I did confront him, and in all honesty, I don't regret doing that. Later, I received an apology from the council because once he started launching personal attacks against the town, he should have been shut off, but they allowed him to continue for about fifteen minutes. And some of the stuff that he said wasn't necessarily the nicest about the people that live here, as well as our elected officials and staff. But we're still working hard to attempt to convince the county council that this is the right thing to do. No one should face the burden of high utility rates with no end in sight. We had to institute a rate structure because we did not have the funds to pay for our water and sewer plant. So we had to institute a rate structure to show how we would pay for it. This elected body and myself, as well as our town administrator, have tried to become very innovative in ways to continue to keep rates at a competitive level, to make people want to move here, to want to live in our town, to bring business here. And that's something that we're working hard to do. That speaks, in speaking about that, I did want to make the statement that our town administrator really works at the direction of our elected body, specifically myself and the different commissioners that are in charge of different departments. He is guided by us, and when we direct him to do something, he does it. All of the people up here that are members of our elected body have day jobs. I would say, our office manager Judy would say that I'm probably the one that's in here the most, but that's also because I have a very flexible job. In addition to doing commissioner work, some of the elected body members are also members of volunteer groups, and they have very busy schedules. We, we have contact with our town administrator, and he is really in charge of the day-to-day operations here. But at our direction, he continues to move forward in the way that we set forth. So with that said, Calvin, if you can, go ahead with the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The reason, in echoing what the mayor is saying, the reason why we are continuing to try to get our word out there is because we are, we are, we are making every effort to be as fair and transparent in what we are trying to do. And it is very frustrating, because as the mayor suggested, we get criticized for coming to these meetings with facts and figures and a good presentation, and we always find ourselves becoming the, the target of just personal accusations. And we, we are asking people with a different opinion to tell us where we are wrong with our interpretations, and we never get that benefit. We just get the personal attacks that are launched. So the most recent thing that we, we just want to put out there is, obviously, we know how important it is for the town to be able to, be able to move its water and sewer, just like all the other towns and Cecil County do. And so the rea- the most recent thing that we want to make sure that people And so the most recent thing that we want to make sure that people clearly understand is what I have here is a copy of the Cecil County Comprehensive Plan adopted April 13, 2010. And if you've been reading in the last couple of newspaper articles in the Cecil Wig, the county administration continues to take the position that the town's desire to provide water and sewer beyond the town limits is somehow in violation of the county's comprehensive plan. As quoted in the Cecil Wig on March 1st, County Director of Administration Al Wine issued a statement Thursday on behalf of McCarthy's office stating that Rising Sun's contemplated expansion of service is not consistent with the goals and objectives of the county's comprehensive plan or the master water and sewer plan. As part of the approval process, but unique to the town of Rising Sun only, we were requested to submit letters of support to the county council. We submitted letters from the Maryland Department of the Environment and the Maryland Department of Planning. And this is going to make sense in a second, but essentially, we're trying to get our master sewer and water vision incorporated into the county's vision. And the state law clearly articulates that our plans should be incorporated into their plans, either in full or in part. And the state law goes on to say that if there is a discrepancy, that will be mediated by the Maryland Department of the Environment. So we're just a little frustrated that we seem to have to jump through hoops that other towns don't have to do. And in this one particular example, we were asked to provide letters from these other state agencies, which, if the county were to approve the plans, it would go to these state agencies, and they would ask, they would render comments on their feelings about it. So asking for the support ahead of time is really putting the cart in front of the horse and hypothetically possibly making it harder for the town to justify its position, and this is not what other towns have to do. So we were asked to provide a letter, and we provided a letter from the Maryland Department of the Environment that said in part, "In addition, under the proposed scenario, the town is willing to provide water to other communities outside its corporate limits by consolidating all of them into its water system. The Water Quality Control Division of MDE and the EPA are proponents of consolidation as an effective measure for improving public health." This letter also clearly articulates concerns about water quality at Rising Sun Elementary School. And as you are well aware, we recently applied for up to $1 million of grant money from the United States Department of Agriculture, who would pay 100% of running a new waterline to the doorstep of Rising Sun Elementary School. But the county blocked that, stating that the running of a waterline to that school was not consistent with their comprehensive plan. So this is how we've ended up down this road of essentially trying to defend the town of Rising Sun. It's also interesting to note that the two meetings that we've gone to the county, we have been asked to come to make those presentations. It has not been the town of Rising Sun coming and trying to kick the door down and demand certain things. We were asked to articulate our position, and that is what we have done. The other letter that we were requested to submit is a letter from the Maryland Department of Planning. And again, when the town submits its comprehensive plan, which we have completed, and submits that to the state, it's the Maryland Department of Planning that will review that plan to make sure it's consistent with the intent of the state law. But the thing that's interesting about the letter that we have is that we have been working with the Department of Planning for close to two and a half years. And you see here where the secretary of the Department of Planning sent our mayor a letter upon our request, talking about how Mr. David Dowstrom has participated in 38 planning commission workshops, two public open houses, a meeting with the Maryland Department of the Environment to address the proposed route of the Chester Water Authority's pipeline, and several technical sessions with the town administrator. The letter also goes on to basically say, "On August 21, 2018, planning submitted comments to MDE concerning the draft update to the Cecil County's master sewer and water plan. Among our comments, planning noted that additional coordination between the county and the municipalities was necessary to address inconsistencies with some of the local municipal growth elements and the proposed water and sewer expansions, in particular, the new waterline in Rising Sun." What this is saying is when the county first went down its road to updating its master sewer and water plan, it sent it to the state to have comments. And the state is telling them in that letter back in August of 2018, "You have your regularities in your plan that do not match what the town of Rising Sun's growth plan is talking about." And they gave them the heads up on that. The letter also goes on to say, "Planning looks forward to continue working with the town of Rising Sun and Cecil County as you plan and grow your community." That is important because, we're going to talk about this in a second, the state recognizes every local jurisdiction in the state of Maryland as being a sovereign entity. And as a sovereign entity, you are given both the responsibility and the right to plan the destiny of your town and how you're going to grow and how you're going to prosper. It does not give the county the right to say, "No, we don't like this plan." Again, they can offer comments, but they have to cite a reason why they don't like it. And then that gets mediated through the Department of Planning. But that's not the image that's being given back to us right now, which is getting a categorically denial that you're not going to do any of this. So when you get back to the county's comprehensive plan, the town of Rising Sun is a sovereign municipality organized under the provisions of the Maryland Constitution and governed under the provisions of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code, everything I just said. And it talks about the town has a responsibility to develop a comprehensive plan. It's important to note that the town has completed that comprehensive plan. I ask that you, for a second, focus on what I just said, that the town has completed that comprehensive plan to include growth areas that are required to be submitted. Cecil County last updated their comprehensive plan back in 2010, which included a section, Section 2.6, titled Cecil County's Future, which states here that while the comprehensive plan looks out 20 years to the year 2030, the implications of the plan's policies and action items will be felt for much longer. Looking to the future, the county must address several key growth and development issues. One, how to attract most new growth to growth areas. Achieving this longstanding county goal has lagged in the past largely because of a lack of water and sewer infrastructure. So the key takeaways on this portion of the county's plan is that they want to attract growth to new growth areas, but they have not been able to do it because of a lack of sewer and water resources in the area to be able to do that. When attracting growth to the designated growth areas is a well-recognized planning concept that the town of Rising Sun fully endorses, and it's reflected in our comprehensive plan. However, the county has been espousing the notion that the designated growth area only pertains to the Route 40 and I-95 corridor. However, when looking at Section 3.4, titled Defining Growth and Rural Areas of the County's 2010 Comprehensive Plan, again, the plan they say that we are violating, it says, "Designated growth areas comprise all areas where the county wishes to encourage and attract growth and development. The designated growth areas are centered in the central part of the county, but also include the associated growth areas around the towns of Cecilton, Chesapeake City, and Rising Sun." So their comprehensive plan is recognizing the areas around the town of Rising Sun as a designated growth area. So clearly, the county has recognized this fact. The county has also recognized that water and sewer infrastructure, or the lack thereof, does not support the idea of new growth to the designated growth areas. Also interesting is the fact that the county's 2010 Comprehensive Plan contains Map 6.2, titled Water Service Areas, and Map 6.4, talking about sewer service areas. And when you look at those maps here, this is what I'm referring to. So when I told you earlier that the county denied us running water to the Rising Sun Elementary School, this map is in the county's comprehensive plan, and that blue shaded area includes the Rising Sun Elementary School. And this is the county saying back in 2010 that these areas are supposed to get water, and that water is to come from the town of Rising Sun. The other map essentially says the same thing on the sewer side. It's showing the proposed sewer areas. So there's another example of where we are not in violation of the county's plan. It is further important to note that all of these matters related to growth areas and comprehensive plans are not regulated by the county, but are in fact regulated by the land use article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, the state law, titled Comprehensive Plan, subtitle 1, titled Requirements and Elements. And this in general is saying, "A local jurisdiction shall enact, adopt, amend, and execute a plan in accordance with this law." The town of Rising Sun has a recognized planning commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, and essentially controls all land development activities in the town of Rising Sun. Furthermore, the sovereign rights of the town is recognized by Cecil County and is referenced in 2.41, titled Zoning and Subdivisions of the Cecil County's 2010 Comprehensive Plan.
Calvin, do you mind?
Excuse me?
Calvin, do you mind if I interject?
Yep.
One of the things that I would tell you is, we continue to bring facts and information to these meetings, and we continue to present these facts and information. And Calvin works very hard at providing details. But the one thing that we continue to be told is that development will only be focused on the Route 40-95 corridor. I can't help that there is a town up here in this corner of Cecil County. In the 1800s, they decided that this was a prime place for it to be. And the job of this elected body and our town administrator is to make it successful, is to make it economically viable. None of us want to see massive development. All of us love our small-town feel. However, we want to be able to develop, just as any other town can. And we feel as such that one of the ways that we can be competitive, one of the ways that we can continue to try to keep rates at a competitive level, is to be able to sell water. So that's what we are fighting for at this point. Calvin?
All right. So we're in the home stretch because there's a couple of black and white issues in the comprehensive plan that we are complying with. And one of the other sections is, the county's comprehensive plan says, "The eight incorporated towns in Cecil County have their own planning authority and adopt their own comprehensive plans, zoning and subdivision regulations." So again, there's another example where we are in compliance with what they say. So clearly, the county's plan recognizes the town's authority and responsibilities to adopt their own comprehensive plan. And the state is saying that the town of Rising Sun is required to have a comprehensive plan, and that the plan shall include a municipal growth area. This task has been completed, as I stated at the beginning of this presentation. We have completed this task. In closing, if we have completed a plan as required by the state, the county has acknowledged that we have the right to create this plan, the county does not attempt to establish the growth area around the towns. And they further state this in Section 3.51, where they say, "As noted above, the eight incorporated towns have their own planning authority and adopt their own comprehensive plans." And it further states, "Each town's proposed future growth areas are described in their comprehensive plans." Then how can the county continue to say that our plans violate their comprehensive plan? It's right in black and white. We're doing exactly what they are suggesting should be done, that the destiny of the towns is recognized by the county and the state to be in the hands of the individual towns. And then the last thing, you know, we've had a quote in the newspaper, again, from one of the county commissioners, Al Miller, who has suggested that it's disturbing and frustrating, and this is in the March 1 news article, "It's disturbing and frustrating that you come up with a good idea and no one follows it." This has been grouped two years in. A lot of people did work on this and volunteered their time and energy on it to bring this forward, he said. Basically, what he's saying is that a lot of people worked really hard on a comprehensive plan. We're conceding that. But the end result of their work is that the town can do exactly what it's doing, and so can the other incorporated towns. And so for them to just repeatedly come out and say, "There will be no growth, there will be no moving of water and sewer beyond the town limits," is completely inconsistent with state law. And again, we're taking this opportunity to tell our residents, because this is very important, and people need to track this, and realize why the town is being persistent about this. We don't want to just walk away and say that that's okay, because it's not. It's not okay.
Thank you, Town Administrator.
Moving into Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Alvin Reed.
First, thanks again to Morgan and her staff from Cecil County Public Libraries for coming in and giving us that great presentation. And again, open invitation, come back and let us know what's going on with spring, summer, and as we get into next year's school, please come back. One thing I want to add on the water situation, thanks again to the Public Works guys for every time we've had a break, getting on it, fixing it. And they were doing that at one point while also plowing snow and salting for ice and all. And hopefully, we're done with that part for the year. One thing I want to add to this water situation, we're not trying to force water outside of the town. We have a need outside, people have a need outside of town who need water and sewer. And for the future of Rising Sun, we just spent a little over $20 million, one, to upgrade our sewer plant because we needed a sewer plant. We just had a big pond over there that was no longer efficient for what it was doing, not filtering out the toxins. So we built a state-of-the-art sewer plant that had room for growth and expansion, not just outside of town, but still within the town limits, where there's still areas where developers and landowners, first and foremost, local landowners, who want to develop some property that they're no longer farming. Nobody's trying to shut farmers down. We know that somebody will benefit by selling farm equipment if they force it to stay farms. But there's a need outside of the town limits for water and sewer. And we can provide that now to help ease the burden of this large cost to the residents. Everybody on this board is a resident. We pay those bills. We pay any increase in the water bill or the tax bills. So we're a resident. We feel that first. But everybody needs to know, there's a need outside to the schools that are outside of the town, to businesses outside of the town who want to be able to expand, but they no longer have water and sewer capacity to do anything with their businesses. Or if a farmer wants to no longer farm and wants to sell his property because that's his retirement or his 401K, and he wants to sell it to somebody that can do something with it, they have the right to do that, too. And if they want to put a business or homes, it's going to require water and sewer. And we have that, and we are just trying to recoup some of the millions of dollars we've spent that will sustain the town of Rising Sun for many years after a lot of us are gone. So I just want to make sure that that's out there, that, once again, we're not trying to force anybody to take our water and sewer.
These are parties, these are parties that have approached us that want this.
Yes. Yes. They have approached us. They have submitted letters of support to us, that they need it, and we can supply it. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Braun?
Our last planning and zoning board meeting, we voted on the amendments to the comprehensive plan. And that plan has been sent to the Maryland Department of Planning and the county. And I'm hoping at this point that we're going to be able to start working on the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Commissioner Braun. Commissioner Warnock?
The only thing I have tonight is we have a park cleanup scheduled for, I guess you can hear my volume all the way. Have a park cleanup scheduled for August 27. And we'll be meeting over at the Public Works facility on Dairy Street, and then we'll go from there, as far as whether we're going to do all the cleanup at Veterans Park or some of the cleanup also at the Dog Park. But we'll have more information, brochures and stuff about that shortly.
Thank you, Commissioner Warnock.
Thank you.
Just some upcoming meetings. Planning Commission is Monday, April 1, at 6:30 p.m. Then we have another town meeting on April 9, at 7 p.m. Another planning workshop meeting is April 15, at 6:30. And then the last town meeting of April is April 23, 2000, excuse me, at 7 p.m. Upcoming events, Tiger Trot is in May, and then Town Hall will be closed on Good Friday, which is April 19. Last, but certainly not least, before we adjourn the meeting, on behalf of the elected body and staff, we want to say a special happy birthday to Jane Bellmeyer. Jane, I won't tell them how old you are, even though it's right there. You have been here long before I came, and I'm sure that you will be here long after I leave. But we are certainly happy to have you and as a part of our town. And thank you so much for all that you do for the town of Rising Sun.
One event you forgot, the Little League Parade is April 13.
Okay. Perfect. All right. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.